This is the October 15th regular meeting of the Montgomery Independent School District Board of Trustees. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please join me in the invocation tonight led by Mr. Paul Cameron.
Gracious God, thank you for everyone gathered here today. As we come before you, we ask you for your guidance and wisdom to discuss and deliberate issues of importance to this school district and to help us to be guided by your spirit. May we wish, may we be wise in our discernment, balanced in our judgment, fair in our decisions, and visionary in our planning. Please bless our staff and students as they return to school tomorrow after a much-needed fall break. We ask that you watch over them, protect them, and give them the motivation to get up and get moving when their alarm goes off tomorrow morning. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Dr. Ruffin, are there any special recognitions or presentations this evening?
We certainly do have some special recognitions, and I'm looking around. Ms. Wells, hey, there she is, right there. Yes, it is principal month this month, and so we're going to spend some time recognizing those amazing people.
This evening, we have Dr. Chris Summers and Carrie Fitzpatrick, and they're going to present to you guys a little memento that we have to recognize our principals this month for National Principal Appreciation Month.
All right. Well, good evening. So I'm going to have the pleasure of saying a few words about our secondary principals, and then Carrie will come up and talk about our elementary principals, and then we have a little gift for them. So tonight, we have the privilege of honoring the remarkable leaders who guide our high schools, junior high schools, and elementaries during Principal Recognition Month. Our principals are more than just school leaders. They are the heartbeat of our school community, shaping a culture of care, trust, and partnership. Each day, they strive not only to foster academic excellence in our pursuit to be premier, but they build strong, meaningful relationships with our students, staff, families, and the broader community. They know that education is most powerful when it's personal and when each student feels seen, heard, supported, and inspired. Our junior high principals, Ms. Roth and Mr. Whitehead, play an especially critical role in these formative years, guiding students through key transitions in their lives. If you've ever taught or been part of a junior high, you know that to be true. They take time to understand each student's unique story, working alongside families to provide a foundation for success both in the classroom and beyond. Their leadership helps create a nurturing environment where students can develop confidence, resilience, and a sense of belonging. Our high school principals, Mr. Williams and Dr. Colavo, both lead with vision and compassion. They foster a sense of pride and ownership within their schools, encouraging students to pursue their goals and dreams while also preparing them for life after graduation. Through every interaction, whether it's greeting students in the hallways or connecting with families at school events, our high school principals demonstrate that their leadership is rooted in care for the whole student and their families. What truly sets our principals apart is their unwavering commitment to building strong, authentic relationships. If you've even talked with them for five minutes, you know this to be true. They understand that a school is more than just a place of learning, and especially here in Montgomery, Texas, it's a community with trust, collaboration, and shared purpose shape the lives of students and families. Our principals work tirelessly and incredibly long hours to strengthen these connections and support our community, and on behalf of our entire district, we want to extend our heartfelt thanks to all of our secondary principals, your leadership, compassion, and dedication making a measurable impact on the lives of those you serve, and we are incredibly fortunate to have leaders who care so deeply about the success of our students and the strength of our community. So I appreciate them. I'm going to let Carrie say a few things about the elementary principals, and then we'll bring them up here and honor them officially.
Thank you. So as Chris mentioned, in celebration of Principal Appreciation Month, I too want to take a moment to recognize all of our dedicated principals who serve our schools, our students, and our community, both elementary and secondary. Specifically elementary, though, I'd like to just praise them a bit for leading with vision, compassion, and unwavering commitment. If you have been around children and children in masses, like four, five, seven, eight hundred, it takes a very special dedication, a very special person, and we definitely have those in Montgomery ISD. These exceptional leaders not only manage the complexities of a school administration, but they also inspire students and staff to reach their fullest potential day in and day out. They work hard to foster a positive school culture, drive academic success, and champion the needs of every child. Today, we honor their hard work and commitment to leadership and acknowledge the vital role they play in Montgomery ISD. I could share a number of specific examples regarding each of them, though they probably are going to be thrilled to hear that I'm not. When I think about our group as a whole, I'd like to share my personal thoughts in the form of an acrostic. The videos or the PowerPoint presentation that you see now are examples of acrostics that came specifically from the campuses. I'm going to use the word "principal" to describe my leaders. Positive role models, P. R. Resourceful problem solvers, I'm sorry, P was positive role models, R. Resourceful problem solvers. I. Inspiring leaders. N. Nurture of student potential. C. Creative thinkers. I. Integrators of diverse perspectives. P. Passionate advocates for both staff and students. A. Adaptable to changing needs. And L. Lifelong learners and mentors. Our elementary principals play a crucial role in cultivating welcoming environments where students not only feel at home, but also have opportunities to thrive. Their compassionate leadership sparks curiosity and a love for learning, allowing students to grow and flourish during these vital years of education. Their dedicated efforts to support staff and foster meaningful connections with families play a key role in creating the positive culture that sets MISD apart. To the principals, thank you for the incredible work you do every day. Your dedication to creating a nurturing and supportive environment for our students, staff, and school community is recognized and sincerely appreciated. You play a vital role in shaping lives and making a positive impact daily. We appreciate your leadership, compassion, and tireless efforts to ensure every individual feels valued and supportive. Thank you for being such an essential part of Montgomery ISD. And at this time, we would like to call our principals up individually. And principals, as you come up, if you would stand to either side, that would be wonderful. Lincoln Elementary. Bobby Ingles from Montgomery Elementary. Mallory Kirby from Keenan Elementary. Tiffany Matthews, Stewart Creek Elementary. Shelby Smith, Creekside Elementary. Kristo Lone Star Elementary. And Ms. Jewel Tucker is not able to be with us this evening.
Just going to go off the order here. Dr. Troy Colavo. Ms. Julia Roth, Montgomery Junior High. And Mr. Jeffrey Whitehead from Oak Hills. Thank you again to all of our principals, and at this time, we want to take a picture with the boards, who will have y'all kind of gather. You'll have to like squeeze them in.
for me to get to see is them and their environment and on their campuses, and how each of them navigate the challenges and the opportunities differently and so successfully. As a superintendent and also as a dad of kids, you want people in your kids' lives that you would be happy there in your life. And I can tell you that all 11 of those individuals, I would be thrilled to have as my kid's principal, and I'm thrilled that our children and our staff are led by those people there. And Ms. Ashlock, I am curious, what is Chick-fil-A queen?
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin, and to the principals on behalf of the board, thanks for all you do for our town, for our children, and making a difference on each of your campuses. So can we give them one more round of applause, ladies and gentlemen? All right. Dr. Ruffin, are there any other special recognitions tonight?
No, sir. That'll do it.
All right. We will move on then to our first information item of the evening. Mr. Cameron and I had the honor of visiting three different campuses through a new endeavor. This is actually something that the board has tried to implement for quite some time, and learning walks, learning walk reflections, so just walking around, sharing a little bit of what we see. We were joined by Dr. Ruffin, Ms. Patrick, Dr. Summers, and of course, the principals on the three campuses that we visited about two weeks ago. The three campuses were Keenan, Oak Hills, and MHS, and we just thought, we wanted to share with the community what we saw, a little bit about these learning walks and some of our reflections. For me personally, it became apparent on every campus that we visited, in every classroom, what we already knew about our teachers in Montgomery ISD, but they poured their all into our kids. It was readily apparent that our teachers that day were there with very dedicated time, very focused pedagogical approaches that they were taking with kids. You know, sometimes when you do these events, you get kind of the planned-out or scripted version. This wasn't scripted. We stopped in surprise spots at times. We, you know, didn't announce our coming here and there, and one of the things that I think for me that really stood out was the integration of technology that we saw. There were kids doing things that I personally didn't even know how to turn on the computer, and these kids were just really, you know, learning from their teachers and learning from each other as well, peer interactions. I was so touched, I think Dr. Colavo has stepped out, so Dr. Summers, if you'll relay this message, by some of the instruction that we saw at MHS, that I had to pull one of the teachers aside and tell them that he inspired me. As an educator myself, he reignited a flame and got me feeling, you know, just how important the role of educator is. And so, you know, I want to say thank y'all for this opportunity. I'm excited for other board members to be able to engage in these learning walk reflections in the near future. Mr. Cameron, was there anything you wanted to add?
Sure. I'll just add on a little bit, this, you know, being new to the board, this was the first time really to get, go and visit some of the schools, and it's very eye-opening to be able to do that, especially going to a Keenan and Oak Hills Junior High. I hadn't been able to go through those schools before. And so, just some of the classrooms we went into, just the, you know, the way that the teachers engaged with the students, we walked into a couple of classrooms, and a couple of the kids just grabbed my hand and said, hey, come play with us. They were doing a dice game, learning math, and things like that. Another classroom we went to, they were working on a comic book strip project, group project, so we got to interact with them. And I think that Dr. Fuller's talking about the teacher, Mr. Barnes, there at the Montgomery High School. My son had him last year for AP World History, and sitting in on that class and seeing how he was engaging with the students, getting them to talk about their ideas and about world geography and history was just really amazing. And so, great things, and I know the other board members are going to look forward to their campus learning walks.
If you don't mind, Dr. Ruffin, real quick, I see Ms. Kirby still joining us, and Mr. Whitehead. I know at Keenan, when we visited, the comic book strip thing was quite comical, actually. It was very fun, and I am waiting to see the resolution of the rising action of a young boy who had his peanut butter and jelly sandwich stolen in his comic strip. So these kids were really creative. Mr. Whitehead, you know, I've always said that it takes a special brand of being to do junior high, and we got to see that first person. You also provided lunch for us, so thank you, Giff. Greatly appreciate that. But folks, I remember, if I can be completely frank, it was a significant portion of the day. It was probably most of the day. It's a significant portion of time, and if I can be a little bit vulnerable and frank with the community for a second, I was actually kind of dreading it at the start. I was like, man, I've got emails to answer. I've got hundreds of things to do, but the moment I walked into Keenan, the moment I walked into Oak Hills, the moment I was on MHS, I would encourage you all to do that at some point in your time. It put me in the right frame of mind. It helped me remember why we do what we do up here, why y'all do what y'all do in y'all's roles, and why our teachers and principals do what they do. So I want to say sincere thank you to everyone in that regard.
Absolutely. And I'll just echo that, and I was going to touch on what you just talked about, is, so our trustees are elected volunteers in our community, and these learning walks take three and a half, four and a half hours. And Mr. Cameron and Dr. Fuller were the first two to attend one, and we've got them scheduled with the rest of the trustees. But just that commitment to participate in an activity that focuses on allowing them to frame the work that we do and to truly keep the main thing the main thing. And Mr. Whitehead, I'll tell you, one of the most impactful things that I got to experience, and I know we kind of debriefed afterwards, was like Mr. Cameron had not been into a cares classroom before, right, a special needs classroom of our more delicately and fragile students. And watching your line leaders, your gen ed students walk into that room and walk up to their task sheet and say, okay, I'm working with student A today, and they immediately fold into the instruction and help and put their hands on and assist. It was inspiring, and it's a testament to the adults that run that classroom, to be as inviting and as inclusive and collaborative as it is. And so, I know I'm looking forward to continuing this because there are so many great things happening on our campuses, and that's what this is for, is to allow them to reflect on that and see the work being done and renew that appreciation for the efforts of our staff. So thank y'all for your commitment to doing that.
All right, and look for more of those kinds of reports from the rest of the board as they engage in it, and guys, you will have a blast, I promise you. With that, Ms. Alcantara, are there any registered public comments? There are no registered public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move to consent agenda. Does a board member wish to pull consent agenda, pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion on consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained? Consent agenda carries as passed, as presented. Onto action items.
Good evening. Action item 7A is the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits. This is an annual housekeeping item. Montgomery ISD is required to make a selection each fall in the event that we're recaptured at the end of the fiscal year. It doesn't necessarily mean we will be recaptured, but we have to go ahead and make our selection at this point. So we have five options. Option one is to consolidate with another district. Option two is to detach property. Option three is to purchase attendance credits from the state. Option four is to contract, a contract to educate non-resident students from a partner district, and option five is to consolidate tax bases with another district. We're recommending option three. That's the district we've chosen in the past. It is noteworthy that of the 350 districts that had to do this last year, all 350 chose option three. So that's the one I recommend for the district.
All right, and as I understand it, Ben, what we're essentially doing is delegating to Dr. Ruffin the authority to purchase attendance credits should we find out that recapture is in effect for us, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Board members, is there, we will do this with discussion second. Is there a motion so that we can put that on the table?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
To consider, to approve action to the agreement purchase of the attendance credit.
All right, that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron and Mr. Nguyen. Now, board members, are there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Davidson? All right, I hear Mr. Nguyen. Yes, sir.
At this point, does it look like we will be subject to recapture?
At this point, we're not anticipating recapture for this year. And we didn't have any for last year either, but we've been surprised before, but...
I think that's important to underscore that we have been surprised, and I think that's one of the major narratives to share about recapture. And Mr. Davidson gets emails back and forth throughout the year with, it's kind of like nailing Jell-O to the wall sometimes. Any other questions? All right, then I'll bring that motion back, the motion Mr. Cameron made and the second Mr. Nguyen made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries. Thank you very much. 7B, consider authorizing the issuance of unlimited tax school building bonds, Series 2024B.
All right. We've got our financial advisor with Luke S. Yanda here to explain that. Go ahead, Luke. Thank you.
So in simple language, y'all had a bond election. We sold 227 million of that 327. We have 100 left, and with the cash flow schedule that y'all have for remaining projects, it's time to go ahead and get the final 100 million teed up for sale. Current interest rates are right at 4%. It'll have the backing of the TEA's PSF program, so that's what gets the interest rates pretty low. Same parameters as before, where we don't extend beyond the 30 years. It was promised to the community, still delivers on the tax rate promise, and so it hits all the major milestones along the way, but it's ultimately asking for delegation to your superintendent and CFO, the authority to lock in an interest rate upon the sale of the bonds.
Thank you. And I'm going to add to that a little bit. So when a school district passes a bond for, like ours, $320 million, that does not require the district to sell all 320 million at one time. So you can be a little strategic with that, and maybe you'll expect a little lower interest rate by selling off what you need to sell off to get the projects underway that you need to do. And so, that's where we're at. We've got that part, that big chunk of it, part completed, and now it's continuing to sell off the remaining 100 million dollars in bonds. It does not impact the tax rate. It doesn't do anything like that. It is simply the remaining already previously approved bonds from 2022.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Is there a motion before we go into discussion?
I'll make a motion to sell the remaining 100 million worth of bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. So that's the motion, and a second. Are there any questions for Mr. Yanda? Mr. Yanda, this is our, Mr. Yanda, this is our last tranche, correct?
It is, last tranche, and so obviously, it'll be all remaining bonds at that point, which means then any debt that y'all have outstanding that becomes eligible for refinancing, especially when it produces savings, we'll bring those to y'all in the future. Roughly about nine months from now, we'll probably be looking at that because there are some additional set of bonds that be eligible to be refinanced if interest rates will continue the direction they've been going. But for now, this will be the last of the new money that can be sold based on what the voters approved.
Since you're here in a public meeting, Ms. Yanda, you're happy, you're pleased with how our bond sales, everything's been going forward with the bond, everything looks good from your perspective?
Very good, because it's always about a promise to community. You know, when you get out there and you're asking folks to support, you know, the construction of this or that or renovations, you know, all the things considered, and y'all was, you know, separating three propositions, and it comes down ultimately to promise of projects with the delivery of an executed tax rate that meets the financing needs. And so, being that y'all have been able to sell the bonds in a manner that has allowed y'all to get the projects going, deliver on a promise, see y'all's tax base appreciate, be in a spot to obviously repay the bonds sooner rather than later. It's about everything a person can ask for.
Okay, great.
It's debt. Don't get me wrong. None of us feel good about ever signing mortgage papers, but then again, you know, very successful process so far.
Great. Thank you. Are there other questions? All right, then we have a motion on the floor. I'll put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Yanda.
Thank you, and I want to recognize Tom Sages, y'all's bond attorney, and so he's the one that crafted all the lovely documents for y'all for this evening's purposes.
So it's you that I get to sign all the papers?
Yes. Yeah, it's all his fault, not mine.
Thank you for being here as well, Thomas. Action item 7C, discuss and consider the GMP for MISD athletic stadium renovation with bond funds as presented.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Ruffin. Wanted to go over tonight our GMP for our first four. We did that. I want to make sure you guys acknowledge Stuart in the back right here. That's not their names, but that is Jay and Jeff from Stewart Builders, and then Brittany from PBK. They're here, they did a lot of, put a lot of work in and answered to a lot of demands and requests from us and my team as we went through this process to come up with this GMP today. So I appreciate their help and support through this. So I wanted to start out real quick with a little slide presentation of a summary. Basically, what we're asking for in this guaranteed maximum price for the stadium renovation, call it a stadium reservation, this is the athletic complex renovation, but you can see up there, we're going to swap home and visitor side, add seating to that home side, the new home side, which is currently the visitor, add a press box in there that's basically a mirror image with a few minor adjustments, including a opened filming deck there to the new press box. An elevator does come with that press box, is required. Concession stands and restrooms underneath that new home side, and in addition to that, parking to the new home side, some addition to some parking to that. One of the other things that's going to be involved in that parking is that parking lot is extended up. We'll see in some pictures. It actually will complete that road all the way to Lone Star to give us another way out of that facility during, before and after games.
Can that be two ways?
It'll be two, it was 24 feet wide. Yes. So also, there's going to be new turf. That turf is close to 10 years old. It's up for renewal on that. There'll be some new graphics, which they'll bring to later on, discuss with Dr. Ruffin and team about what's going to go on that turf. The fieldhouse, we have a current fieldhouse there that has been in existence, and currently with the, what's been happening is the central area, there's kind of a locker room shared with softball and other groups, that's been the visitor locker room. It's pretty small. The home locker room has been on the current home side. We're actually trying to build an mirror image of that one with a few adjustments and office space that aren't needed. It'd be kind of duplicated on that, on the new side as well. So to be a completely new building attached to where the current concession stand is for baseball and softball, right on the end of that, some office space, and then also some renovating the current locker room with neutral colors in there. So right now, it's a lot of purple, and we want to make that more of a neutral color so both teams can feel at home in either one of those locker rooms. Additionally, there is an addendum in there. Additionally, there is an addendum in there and a contingency to add some baseball and softball safety netting improvements, and I'll, and, and basically on those is currently our softball, our baseball net at, at the MHS field is about 25 feet high, the one at Lake Creek's 50 feet high, and the one at softball is 40 feet high, we want to make it comparable to what Lake Creek has, move the, the poles back as well to improve the experience of the viewer. So that's a summary of basically what's everything in this, in this package, it's a high level summary, so I know there's more detail. This is a, this is a rendering of the new concert home side, and you can see the ticket booths there, we made some adjustments to those to lower some of the cost with some of the decking and roof material, you can see the elevator shaft, the new press box, and then you'll also see as we've added bleachers, it ate away some of that parking that was currently there with the old bleachers in place. So here's kind of a mock-up of the, the, the new bleachers in that section, and you can see the new press box, and if you look at the, the central part of that press box, you'll see that's an open filming deck, which will really help some of our, the band and, and other, and media, and some of even our student filmers use that to film the game and the, and the other performances. So we're adding in this, in this, in this, in this GMP, we're adding about 2,838 additional seats to that side, bringing the capacity to about 5,173. Total capacity of the entire, if you, if you were to glance at both sides when it's all done, you couldn't tell the difference between the two, there's a few seats off between the existing side and the new side, but it basically comes to around over 10,000 total seats in that facility. Here is kind of a top view, if you remove the bleachers, you can see the concession stand and the restrooms that are there, they're attached just like, very similar to what's on the current side right now. We did add enough bathrooms for both male and female on that side, and the concession stand underneath there is non-existent right now, there's not a concession stand, the current visitors do have to go to the baseball softball concessions to get any concessions. Here is a, I guess a flyover look of what the, the, the new parking lot will look like, so you see all the parking, there's A, B, C, and D. A and B are going to be new, B has been there, but it's, we're calling it new because we took away some spaces because of the footprint of the stadium, but A is all new. And if you look on the left-hand side of that, I guess that right triangle, not quite a right triangle, it goes into, that's Lone Star Parkway. That'll be completed to go all the way out to Lone Star there, so currently that's, lot A is all dirt right now. Lot B is, it's going to be the new home side parking over there, and you can see baseball, softball on the right, the new fieldhouse concession, if you squint just right, we'll get a closer look at it, you can see the fieldhouse addition kind of blocked out there near the baseball side, you'll see some detention that's necessary up on the top right-hand side as well. And then moving down, we go into lot C, which is the auditorium, which in football games and other events, we use that parking for those events, but it's also used for the auditorium, the aquatic center, and then lot D is the existing lot that is there. Here's kind of a, an overhead shot, a blueprint shot of the new fieldhouse addition and some of, an overview of what's going to be in the current fieldhouse. So if you see, there's a lot more office space on the existing fieldhouse, but then the, the locker room itself where kids are going to be is pretty much identical in square footage. We did add the bathrooms and a small coaches' office of taping area in there, and that's going to be right on the other side of the concession stands currently that's there, and we reduced that scope down significantly for cost savings because we felt like some of the office spaces on the right-hand side was redundant to be on the left-hand side. So we reduced that square footage quite a bit. Here's some renderings of the, the fieldhouse and what it's going to look like.
Mr. Mansfield, I do have one question about the fieldhouse, if you don't mind.
Okay.
You know, that's something we hear a lot about, and the equity between our two high schools with the fieldhouse, can you walk us through maybe just a little more detail how this helps us get to kind of equitable locker rooms, fieldhouse, all that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir, absolutely, so.
Looks like I was one slide ahead.
Pardon me?
Looks like I was one slide ahead.
Well, no, I'm going back to this one, so you, you can see right here, and you can't really see the laser on there, but that middle section that's on there is, you'll see the concession stand, and then that is a softball locker room for MHS uses. Baseball's been kind of dressed in their cars from time to time, or whenever they can come and dress for, for baseball practice. So the current right side one that we, we have over there has Montgomery High School colors, has Montgomery High School branding, that's all going to be removed, and it's going to be a neutral Montgomery ISD. The left-hand side, if you take that top portion up there, the left-hand new fieldhouse is going to be exact print of what, what that one was with neutral colors as well, but that's going to be the new home. So either, if you're, if you're Lake Creek, Montgomery, whatever side you're on for home that night, that are away, most of the time, our teams are going to be on the home side, except for when they're playing each other and they switch. They shouldn't be able to tell the difference, at least a whole lot of difference between the two sides when they're in that locker room and the experience. Both of them will have a seated bench, a wooden bench area for, for athletes to change and sit in, they will have an additional, some hooks up there, so there's not lockers in there, there's nothing too frivolous in there, and then when they exit, I know there had been a problem in the past sometimes with teams crossing and all that, they're going to have their own locker rooms to exit out of in that area. Did that answer that question, or?
Yes, sir, that works for me, thank you.
And then in the, in the existing softball locker room right there, we are, the only really thing we're doing in there is we're, the flooring is in pretty bad shape, we're upgrading and putting some new epoxy flooring down, it's, it's peeling down, it's got some cracks in it, we're going to do minimal amount of touch-up in there.
So what does this do for the MHS baseball team now, will they have a place to change?
So the MHS baseball team has yet to be determined where they're going to change, but they're going to have this locker room.
But they'll have a dedicated space?
Their, their baseball season, they can use that locker room. There's not going to be football locker stuff kept in there.
Okay, so they'll have a space.
After they do that, it's cleared out, it's anybody that's used to. So they, they will have access to that, and that runs pretty much directly out to the baseball field, and the one on the left-hand side.
Mr. Mansfield, since we're on this fieldhouse right now, I know you talked about making it more neutral, and something that I just kind of thought about, have we talked about potentially, I know that it needs to be renovated, the current one now, making that, it's all Montgomery High School colors, right?
Right.
I understand they want to be neutral, have we thought about leaving that Montgomery High School, the new one, make that Lake Creek, you know, Lake, so they have their locker room when they play a home game, the visitors would play in the other side, or go to the other side. When Montgomery High School plays, they go to their locker room, and then the visitors go to the Lake Creek locker room, maybe, go ahead.
Brad, I'll.
He weren't, he weren't here when we had some of those conversations, so we had met with our athletic coordinators on campuses and, and kind of pitched that option, would you like to see a Lake Creek branded locker room and an MHS branded locker room, knowing that whenever we do play each other and you might be on the opposite side of where your stands are, that to come out, we would actually end up being crossed? And they didn't really have a whole lot of passion behind making one specifically branded and it stays theirs versus just making sure that they are neutral.
Okay.
So based on feedback we got from them, we went the path of everything would be neutral.
And we brought them back in to have the discussion again, I guess that was probably around June, to kind of start nailing down some of the things that they really wanted and, and felt like that, as an athletic coordinator, as a coach, we really feel like we need this. One of the things that was brought up is crossing paths.
Okay.
During that time, it was a minimal thing, but it was one of the things, but, and they did like the hooks rather than the lockers.
Okay.
To keep the cost down on that. Great, great questions. So everyone saw two weeks ago that we have a significant capacity issue right now in our, in our, in our stadium, in our football stadium, the challenges with parking and traffic. It was an unbelievable event, by the way, it's the first Motown showdown I've been to, I've been around schools for 27 years, I was a high school principal, I loved that atmosphere, it was great. I don't know if I'd want to be in the line trying to get out of there and find parking spots in the middle of it, but it was an unbelievable atmosphere, so to give the kids in the community something that can hold the people that we're going to have at these events, and the more and more we grow and the, our athletic teams are successful, the kids are passionate about it, the bands, the drill team, everybody, they all come there to see that show, and our, our team worked hard to refine the scope of this project, so it's reasonable and conservative while meeting the needs of the community and all the students that have access to the facility. These improvements add value to our programs, other than just football, both the MHS softball and baseball teams, they do use those locker rooms, the parking lots, the concession stands, as well as our track teams and soccer teams and other facilities, or other groups use that as well. So the conservative and reasonable construction project has a GMP of 14.6 million. And in that 14.6 million, the football stadium specific works, it comes in under budget, what our construction budget was for the football stadium, and the allotted, for a lot, what was allotted in Prop B, and we're able to easily afford the work completed outside of that fence, the stadium fence, like we have referred to it, like what's outside the fence is in Prop B, what's inside the, what's inside the fence is Prop B, what's outside is Prop A. We can afford that through savings, interest earned on bonds funds, and also our comparability funds that have been set aside in this budget to make sure that we take care of all the schools and the, and the different comparability issues and our concerns in our district. So with that said, I will, any questions, anybody has about?
I want to make one slight point, just to note that you're talking about Prop B, Prop A of 2022, just to be, just to be clear for the record.
Not Prop A that's happening right now, yes, sir.
Questions?
I got a few, if that's okay. Mr. Mansfield, can you talk about the, the contingency dollars, just looking at the overall budget, we're looking at between the, the two different contingency plans there, it's about 1.15 million, and just explain what that is exactly?
So one of the alternates that we were brought up to try to, to, to pick was a baseball softball netting. One of the things that Stuart and PBK put together was a plan to, to do the softball or the baseball field, move the poles back because that net is really low, and if you sit at the top of those bleachers, a foul ball, I mean, it's going to come right at you. The other thing that when I met with a, a, the Nets of Texas, the owner, went out there and we looked at it together, the backstop from home plate to the backstop is really far, I don't know if I'd want to be a catcher at MHS, it's a long ways back there, so that gives even more time for a ball to get back there. So raising it up is important, it only covered that in that, in that, in that alternate that we could have chosen. So Mark and I, working together with, with Stuart, have decided that if we put it into a contingency that we may or may not use, and I think that we would like to use it, then we don't have to spend that money, and it'd, it'd give us more time to make sure we get the best price and value there. I did meet with the Nets of Texas guy, and I think we need to, if we're going to change out that net at the, at the softball field, probably need to do the same at the, at the baseball field. He went over, he and I went over and looked at Lake Creek. Lake Creek has, to make it comparable and the same for what MHS is getting compared to what Lake Creek has, MHS currently has poles that go up directly in front of the bleachers. Lake Creek, when it was built, had the poles set behind, that's the new standard now, it allows for the net to be a little bit taller, a better player viewing experience as well, and so we wanted to add that in, and that was in the alternate in there already. I did ask, is there any way that, because I, I do like to, to ask questions about cost, is there any way we could add length to those poles, engage to those poles? And with the current poles, it wasn't possible, they weren't, the gauge wasn't thick enough, and that, that was only, that pole was only 25 feet tall. In order to get it truly as high as it needed to be, the Nets of Texas did recommend, and he does, he told me the whole, he does a lot of work around the state of Texas, he would recommend moving them back and setting them up higher.
I want to make note that that was originally not included in the original bond, but because of the extra available funds that we've been able to save, we're able to include that into this because.
Yes, sir.
It was not included in the original bond.
It was not.
The electrical side of that stuff, are we replacing the lights? I noticed in there that it says replace high bay lights on the existing bleachers and new high bay lights on the, the new bleachers, so is that replacing the lights on the entire complex, is that what it's doing?
Is that the, under the bleachers, replacing the lights in the entire complex?
No, in existing side.
Not on the existing side.
You mean lights, not the stadium lights, we're not replacing stadium lights, it's lights at bleachers.
Like under the bleachers is what I think you were referring to.
It says that existing.
It says, it says on here, replace high bay lights at existing bleachers and then new high bay lights at the new bleachers. Just trying to figure out exactly what that is so that we make sure that we're representing it well enough out in the community that it's not necessarily replacing the stadium lights, it's just the bleachers.
You're talking about the big lights that shine down, they are not going to be replaced.
Okay.
What about the, the parking lot lights, like on the new home side and stuff, is it going to run all the way to Lone Star Parkway?
Those, the lights on the road are not included, there's no lights on the actual road outside of the parking lot.
Lone Star.
They are, there's lights on that?
Lone Star, yeah.
Okay, all the way out to Lone Star?
So it will illuminate the highway right there when they're directing traffic? So there'll be lights, so when they're out there directing traffic, they can be seen a little more?
Yeah, there's a group of lights going out to it, I don't know exactly where they're located, you know, there's lights going out.
Okay. I can connect with you and show you the plans, Sean.
And then as far as the passage between the two parking lots, is that going to be cut off during games, or is that open still?
We actually had that discussion with myself today, and looking at that, because we obviously have more parking on the current visitor side than we do on the home side, some more. I think we need to come up as a district working with Chief Deary and his team to what are we going to do with home side parking, and now that we have the entrance and exit from Lone Star, that gives us three options to get in and out of that parking lot, so do we just limit that second entrance for home side only, and visitors only come in that first one, and they park there and we can flag off? We'll have to figure that out to make sure that we accommodate enough for the home, because I, I mean, for, for a big game, even a non-big game, where we're going to have a lot more people there, either Montgomery or Lake Creek, we're going to make sure we take care of, you know, our spectators before the visitors when it's out of town.
So we didn't have an ops plan for this event on parking, correct?
For this event that just happened?
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we did have one.
That was a hectic night though, with.
I couldn't even get to it because there was no parking. Did we ever do an ops plan about parking at the high school and busing people over? In the future, that needs to be talked about because it's going to be less seats, I mean, less parking spots on the home side for sure, and it's just going to get worse as we get more growth, so we need to have that in the future.
Typically, I think the ratio for parking spots per people is three to one, is the I, is like awesome, four to one is acceptable, we're right below, we're like four and a half to one, but I think anything is up for discussion as we have that, I mean, and we can learn from, if it was crowded, this, do we use MHS, which we have a big parking lot over there, right, and shuttle people back and forth?
I do know Chief had his, his, his plan for traffic control, who's going where, who's doing what.
This was his first, this was his first one, so.
Yeah, right. In terms of like alternate options, in terms of like running a shuttle bus, those are things we didn't discuss, but reflecting back, things that we can actually absolutely consider moving forward.
I, I think that this was by far the most well-attended in the, since Lake Creek's been in existence, this is by far the most attended event, and we've never, it's always been crowded, but it's never been like it was that Friday night. The only other question that I have is, it shows utilities and a utility demo of $341,000, what, what exactly is that?
I'm assuming there's going to be a lot of the site work?
Utilities?
Yes, your utility demo.
Fire line for its break room system up to it, that's the biggest need separate there. Fire line, any fire line for the break room system up to it.
Were required to sprinkle underneath the bleachers.
But that demo, I guess I'm just, I'm thinking that it's demolition of existing utilities or something like that.
You've got an existing storm in front of the bleachers, and we've got a demo up, and we've got to reroute it.
Okay. Thank you.
Board members, other questions?
After this is complete, will our stadium be able to be used by other teams and stuff and host events, will we be big enough for that?
Oh, I think seating capacity wise, absolutely, and I think it's, could be marketable, from, from my experience and perspective, it's 105, there's smaller teams and schools that are, it's a good halfway point in between there, first, second round, third round, I think when you start getting to the fourth round, they want to go to the A&amp;M's, the Baylor's, the, you know, those kind of places, and, and some of these stadiums that have luxurious things, but I think it could be marketable for that for sure. I mean, to have 10,000 seats is pretty, pretty, pretty good.
Ladies and gentlemen, other questions?
And Brad, real quick, can you just speak real quick on the plan of when we're going to get this started, and are we going to get this completed before next season?
Well, yes, we're going to get this completed, that's the plan. So we, and talking with Coach Hurd, there is a chance, and it's a good chance, that So we, and talking with Coach Hurd, there is a chance, and it's a good chance, that we get to host a playoff game. And if one of the teams finishes first or second, then, then they get to host a playoff game. So that would put November 15th as the last game here. That doesn't mean as soon as this is done, I know I talked to Jay and team this afternoon is, that, that, you know, they're, they're going to get ready to go as soon as we can. We get the contract signed, we can start rolling. I think our tentative plan was, can we get baseball nets done if that's a contingency? If we're going to go ahead and do that, let's get that pricing solidified, which it, it should come in a whole lot lower than that 350,000. But just to be safe, we put that in there. I think if we can get that going before baseball season, though we don't have to disrupt or, they don't have to work around baseball players on there. There's some other site work, we are waiting a little bit. The city has one more revision they sent back to us for some permitting to do some of the site work to get rolling. But I think these guys, I've watched them work on the CT building and I've worked, watched them work on MHS. They stay on time.
Okay, good.
They do.
Is this something Montgomery ISD is willing to do, is rent out our facilities for, for events? Because in the past, I'm not sure that we have. And so I'm just curious if that's really something we're going to look into as both the money, you know, when we're talking about deficits and stuff, I just, is that something that we're going to start doing? Is that?
We, we have facility use fees schedules-
Okay.
Already established, so we do it on, on some of our, like Oak Hills Junior High also serves as the Church of Montgomery meets at Oak Hills Junior High, so they rent that facility from us. We have a couple of other examples in which that takes place. When it comes to this specific stadium renovation, when you're picking up a playoff site, if, if I'm going to be the visiting team, I don't want the home team to have 2X what I concede on my side. So in terms of this being more inviting and appealing, knowing that both sides are going to be the exact same number of seats, it's going to present opportunities in that regard, that it would be more attractive to.
I'm, I'm talking about just our facilities, like all our sporting facilities, I guess it's something that we can look into.
Yeah, and we do. We, we host playoff games. I would say, and I think you're aware of this, but kind of the one underutilized area that we have is the auditorium.
Yeah.
But we have, we host playoff games in which our facilities are rented out for baseball and softball. That is one of the, one of the draws of having nice athletic facilities is they do actually generate some revenue back.
Okay.
I want to speak on behalf of that for just a second. I think in the, the past, it's been, if our teams, and I'm primarily saying this about baseball and softball, if our teams were still in the playoffs, we did not open that facility up to be used to host playoff games, if that makes sense. I, I know that in the past few years, MHS, we were able to use the baseball and softball field, but at Lake Creek, those teams were still continuing in the playoffs and those facilities did not get used because they were still in the playoffs.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the revenue piece of it. And if we're talking about renting this out, we have areas that were underutilized.
All right, gang, one last round of questions, going once, going twice. So we did not yet put a motion on this, and so I will entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. To consider the approval of the GMP for the MHD Athletic Stadium renovation with bond bonds as presented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. And item 7D, consider approval of purchases over 50,000 for professional services for said athletic, athletic center.
There wouldn't have been a point to approve material testing for a stadium if we didn't get it approved. So I appreciate you guys, I appreciate y'all's patience. And thank you again to Stewart and PPK and David as well. Anybody else who helped us get this together, there's been a lot of feedback on that, so I appreciate you guys on that. So materials testing is professional service. As by law, professional services, I can't go out and bid it and negotiate it, it's based on qualifications, I can negotiate it. UES is Alpha Testing, they bought them, we've used them for several of our projects. Before I got here, I've worked with them on several of the concrete testing, they're doing CTE right now. They're professional, they're on time, they come back timely with reports. And the staff that we interact with has been very, very easy to work with. So with that, our proposal that comes forth is for $82,000. That's down probably about 40% from when it first was sent to me. Got some feedback from a few different groups and we reduced that down to what we feel like is necessary as far as the testing goes. And it comes back at $82,753 and we are asking for action on that tonight.
All right, let's put the motion on table. Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the materials testing for the new athletic complex.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. And a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Any questions?
Is there any reason why this wasn't put on the previous action?
It's separate, it's not part of the GMP. Like, they work for us. So we, like, they don't, Stewart or any, we hire Alpha to do the testing as a third party. So they watch them for us. So they watch the concrete trucks when they roll up and they take the slump and they take cylinders, which you see them laying around sometimes on the side of the road. But they, they go back and they test that. So they, they, they report directly to us on that.
Questions? All right, hearing none, let's vote on the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. That motion also carries. Thank you, Mr. Mansfield, for your information tonight. Folks, we are on to, the second block of information items. Item 8A, delinquent tax report. This sounds like a lot of fun.
We've got our representatives from Linebarger to give us our delinquent tax report. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the invitation, Dr. Ruffin and the board. We appreciate the opportunity to, to serve y'all. We've represented you for quite a few years. First off, I'd like to start with an introduction. With me tonight is James Cawkins. He's the newest member of our team in Conroe. He's an attorney that was previously with the Attorney General's Office and he's been with us all of a couple of weeks now. I'm Jeff McRae, I'm the Operations Director in the Conroe office. And anyway, I've been with the firm for, oh, 37 years now, so been around for a bit. Am I running the clicker to get to our, or did Ben get? Okay, y'all have a copy. Y'all are seeing it in your board book.
We got it in board book, yes.
Okay, all right, well, it, it was not on the screen. So I would direct your attention to page one of the report. The first top section there is just a snapshot of your current delinquent tax status. You can see how many owners' accounts, I won't go into the great details except to hit the high points. Would point out your base tax balance of just over 2.8 million. And by property type, your delinquent tax role is made up of 90% of the balance is on real property accounts. The second part is tax deferrals. Tax deferrals are, are documents that the taxpayer can sign with the appraisal district and for an over 65 or disabled person homestead, they do not have to pay their taxes. It lowers the interest that accrues, stops penalty. And the biggest thing is, from our standpoint, if, basically it comes down to, if we have a suit filed, we can't do anything else with it. If we don't have a suit filed, we can't file one. So 1.12 million of your delinquent balance is under deferral. So those are accounts that we cannot mail to, we cannot touch. That equates to just over 39% of your total delinquent balance. So, collection activities for the prior year. We were here a year ago and during this period, we've completed nine comprehensive mailings. Mailings are one of our primary tools to, our goal is to always have a tax statement or letter in front of the taxpayer with that current month's amount on it. So the opportunity is always there. We, we work that in coordination with the tax office. They have online payment options, we have check by phone options, we have a, a ton of different payment options that we utilize now that are, that are very effective. When our mailings fail to result in a collection, the next step in the process is we file suit. You can see the totals, we filed 77 lawsuits for over $569,000 for the district, took 39 judgments and had 31 properties that we listed for tax sales. Most of those were vacant properties. I know the board, Ben, a few months ago contacted me and said y'all had some interest in properties that were in the tax trust. Those are properties that had been to a tax sale, no one purchased them at that sale. And in that situation, they're what we call struck off. They are owned by the taxing entities. So we initiated a resale on those. There were a handful of lots in Dobbin, a couple of other properties that were, that we did resale. The Dobbin lots, there were three that are actually, there is a property owner who claims, and, well, I would kind of agree with him, these are lots that existed when Dobbin was a platted area. And there are probably half a dozen lots within the boundaries of a, just a haymetta that some folks own and they pay on it as acreage, not as lots. So we pulled those from the sale, there were three that were included in our tax trust property list. And they are working through that with the appraisal district to determine if it's a, a double assessment of situation, basically if it's, if it's owned as acreage and they've been paying it and it's also owned as lots for the town of Dobbin. So, anyway, as a further breakdown on tax sales, just the 31, 10 of those properties were sold, which includes some of the Dobbin properties. Eight accounts were pulled, like the three that I mentioned in Dobbin, 11 paid in full and two did payment agreements with the tax office after they were posted. Page two is a nice pie chart. And the purpose of this is just to give you a visualization of where your delinquent dollars are. In our business, we do not like to see, you know, a lot of years rolled up on the back years. We want to see the most current years or the most collectible years. And as you can see, about 50, 65% of your role is delinquent three years or less. So we're working on fairly current delinquencies, which makes our, makes our job much easier. The next few pages are a series of, of bar charts. I would point out on page three, the, that is a comparison of base tax only and it just is a year-to-year comparison, excuse me, for the months of July through September. So we can see how we compare, what did we do July through September of the past few years. If you, the, if you look at this year, as you go, well, wait, you know, those are, we're a little on the short side. Basically, we had two major factors that affected our, this timeframe this time, namely Hurricane Burl. That closed the tax office for a week, closed our office for a week. We had electricity back, but we did not have internet back. And then further, so our, we did our mailing, the mailing was very slow to be delivered. We, we have caught up strong since, but that really put the, you know, put a damper on our July collections to what we consider normal. The other thing I would point out, the, if you look at the total delinquent balance and the turnover on the right-hand columns for tax year 2023, you'll see the turnover for this year was 1.85 million. Last year it was 2.43. So there was much less turnover resulting in a lower delinquent balance. So essentially, we are working on a smaller pie, which was a major factor as well. Page four is the same comparison, but it shows the entire collection year for the prior years instead of just the month-to-month comparison. Page, excuse me, page five is much the same, but this chart includes taxes, penalty and interest. We don't include penalty and interest for comparison purposes because that can greatly skew your numbers if there are a lot of old year collections or, in the case of, there are properties that were, had homestead exemptions removed and they may have been paid without penalty and interest at all, so it really, really affects the outcome. Page six is another chart showing kind of the same numbers. This one gives you a little information that you didn't have.
Oh, thank you.
If you didn't know, she is the best.
Okay, yeah. I appreciate that. So, yeah, the, the main point of this one, and it's a bit skewed at the moment because we're early in the collection year, you see the, the blue in the bottom, the purple at the very bottom represents collections from personal property accounts, which are turned over early. Your district has very few industrial, commercial, you know, business, personal property accounts and even less that go delinquent. So that is just not a significant part. The difference in the blue and the green is net versus gross collections. So for the past couple of years, the appraisal district has undergone a data conversion and they were way behind with homestead exemptions, lots of value increases, lots of litigation, which resulted in, you know, a lot of settlements and a lot of refunds. Ben can probably attest to that, seeing the reports from, from all those things. So basically, the top of the chart, if you look at the whole thing, that's the dollars collected. The blue is what went in your bank account. The green is what were dollar, delinquent dollars that were collected, that were used to pay those refunds and from, from collection litigation and, or appraisal litigation and the late homestead applications. That first year, this was, this was a comparison of turnover year only, which is the current tax year that just got turned over in July. For this year, it's 2023, that we just started collecting on. July a year ago was 22 and so forth, so. And then finally, that last bar chart shows the taxes, penalty and interest for the entire delinquent tax role. And for the big finish, page eight of the report is, these are dollars collected. This is what have you done for me lately? And as you can see, we've had a, a steady trend of increased collections. Some of that is attributable to labby growth, so that's where, you know, had more value and, you know, your rates were compressed by the legislature last year, so, you know, it's a, that's always an ever fluctuating amount. But as you can see, for the year that ended in June 30th, we collected over 1.9 million in taxes, penalty and interest on behalf of the district. And like I say, you can see the, the three months shown above, you can see July was a little, a little off compared to prior years, but we've rebounded very strong, had a strong September, so expect that to continue.
All right.
Any questions or?
Thank you, Mr. McRae. Any questions? I want to say a sincere thank you to both of y'all for being here tonight, also for explaining the properties in Dobbin. I think that's one question a lot of us have had before, so thank you for that explanation and for all you're doing for us.
Absolutely. We appreciate the opportunity and look forward to serving you for years to come.
All right, thank you. Give my best to all your team.
Thank you.
All right, information item 8B, required annual, annual presentation of the LEP student progress.
Yes, Ms. Dehart, thank you for being here, appreciate you.
Good evening. Would you believe that last year there were 13 languages other than English that were spoken by our emergent bilingual students within Montgomery ISD? That's just one of the data elements I'm going to share with you tonight. I am Jennifer Dehart, I am the district's bilingual ESL specialist as well as the district testing coordinator. And I thank you for your time this evening as we go through this required presentation of the progress of our students that, oh, I just backed out of it, Diana, sorry. Of our students that are identified as emergent bilinguals. So starting with the programs that we have here within Montgomery ISD, we have ESL, which is our English as a second language program. And at the elementary level, this is a content-based model in which all of our core content area teachers are ESL certified. We also have a pull-out model. This is primarily at the secondary level where our RLA, our reading language arts teachers are ESL certified. At Montgomery Elementary School, we have a bilingual program, which is a dual-language, two-way immersion program, which serves students that are native English speakers as well as native Spanish speakers, and their instruction is in both languages with the goal of creating biliterate and bilingual students in each language. Our staff that serves these students, for ESL, we had 89 teachers that were ESL certified last year throughout pre-K through 12th grade. And for our dual-language immersion program, which is at Montgomery Elementary, so that's just pre-K through 5th, we had nine teachers serving those students. just pre-K through fifth, we had nine teachers serving those students. Here's those thirteen languages, quite a variety, Mandarin, Cambodian, Vietnamese, Japanese, Russian, Thai, Ukrainian. Here's our data as we look from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to last year. We had a fourteen percent increase in our emergent bilingual students last year. So we had forty-seven additional students that enrolled and were identified and served within Montgomery ISD. For a total of three hundred and fifty students, with two hundred and thirty of those students being served through ESL, a hundred and forty-seven of them being served in our dual-language two-way classes, we had ten students that were a denial of services, and that's a reason parents choose for a variety of reasons. They want English-only immersion, they want them to attend their neighborhood school. However, the best news of the evening is that we went from four students in twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-seven students last year in twenty-three, twenty-four that met criteria to no longer be emergent bilinguals. They are now English proficient students and were able to exit out of services. Our certified teachers have many opportunities to attend professional development such as boosting achievement for emergent bilingual students, the Summit K-12 program, Latino family literacy training, Title III symposium. We have a conference they attend in July, as well as literacy literacy training and language proficiency training. In looking at their English progression, their proficiency is looked at through the data of the Tellpass test. So Tellpass is the Texas English Language Proficiency Assessment, and it is looking at their proficiency in listening, speaking, reading and writing in English. They take this assessment each spring. And as you can see from the graphic here, the majority of our students last year were scoring in that advanced level. The majority of our students are at the elementary age, and so this is quite impressive that they're already scoring at the advanced level at such a young age. For our STAR data, that is also taken in the spring, this graphic is showing our third third through eighth grade students that achieved approaches. So in other words, they passed the STAR test. And you can see that the lowest area was social studies, which would just be eighth graders, and that the highest percentage was in reading, which is quite impressive considering that this is third through eighth grade. They're all at different levels of English level proficiency, so they scored very well. More of them passed than did not. Same thing with high school. And if I can draw your attention to U.S. history, ninety-seven percent of our emergent bilingual students passed the U.S. history test, and they did very well in biology as well, scoring in the high eighties in all other subject areas. So obviously, our number of emergent bilingual students that enrolled last year increased. We are continuing to experience that increase currently for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Our students are continuing to make progress in developing their English language proficiency, and we will continue to increase the number of teachers that are ESL certified to keep up with that demand. And do you have any questions for me?
For them to become ESL, like the supplemental, that's just them taking the?
It's just an additional test, yes, ma'am. Yes.
Ms. Dehart, what do you think? A lot of great successes. What do you think we're doing that's working?
I think we've really stepped up our professional development opportunities. Our curriculum team has really provided, especially at the secondary level, additional opportunities for those teachers to attend, as well as purchasing the Summit K-12 program, which is an online program that puts students at a learning path based on their current level of English level proficiency that they're able to log into from home or when they have downtime in class or throughout labs. Those are the things I think are attributing to that.
There's a lot of great data in there, so thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Additional questions, comments, board members? Thank you for staying late with us, Jennifer. Greatly appreciate it.
Yep. Now have a good evening.
Information item eight B, eight C, bond update.
All right. Originally, I had about seventy-five slides here, and Dr. Ruffin asked me to shrink this down.
You got seventy-five seconds.
Yes. So it was going to be one second per slide. This is exactly what he said. So I'll move through this pretty quick, but I wanted to give you guys, thank you for the opportunity to come up and kind of talk about the the bond and the progress. Really excited about a lot of the work that's been going on. The community has graced us with the ability to do this, and I think we're we're working to provide some pretty bu pretty good returns. So I'm going to go through pretty quick, but this is a slide that kind of shows you where we are with all of our stuff, Creekside, all those, where we are. And then it has on the right-hand side the completion timeframe for each one of these. As you can see, summer two thousand twenty-five is is a big is a big, big date. We have a lot of big projects coming up, including one of our largest ones with the CTE and Ag Center. So Creekside Elementary, kind of a final update on that, is we're working the final punch list on that. But one thing I did want to 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 point out is that even after the the road, and actually the road is not included in in this one, it's it it is not added into this one. But with that, we still have plenty of contingency in there. We're still in debate about what what the road temporary timing and when we returned it is. But that that's going to be about another one hundred and forty thousand dollars off of that for that. We still have a healthy contingency there. We ran behind on this project, but we got it open. It opened for the first day of school and kids were allowed to to go in there, but there's still a lot of work to be done via Punch and Pogue and Huckabee and myself, David and Joe were hounding them on getting that final part done. Wanted to give you a few updates on that and Shelby too. Shelby provides a lot of feedback when she sees it in there, and she's been a great help with that. The display cases are one of the last things to go in, but I wanted to point out in this picture, I mean, just the kind of the the awesome student work that that display case has provided, it kind of brings to life that whole school and brings like a reality, it's a school now. And those just really got installed recently. This is that long corridor coming in from the gym pointing in the direction of the library. Here's the book fair going on, for one thing, but the second part was there's the little trees and the clouds that are up there. And then Shelby wanted me to, I asked her if she'd take that picture, but that's that last logo. So we're wrapping up Creekside, and we're feeling pretty good about it.
Where are we at on the floor issue there?
So there's still, if you go in there, there's one big crack that we were really concerned about. We have not, that's that's part of the retainage. We haven't, we haven't released that portion for sure on the terrazzo. But there's still some seepage, as they said there would be of the in the mudbed, some moisture that's in there coming up. It's better. And when we first got it all cleaned up and buffed, it looked great, but now it's starting to seep up. We're going to continue to clean it and look at it, but we're going to give it some more time, do do another buff and 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 treatment of that. And then we're going to address that crack here pretty soon. We wanted to get all the moisture out of there from that from that mudbed that's seeping up until it has time to, the word they use is leach out, all that water in there. A lot of that had to do, in theory, with the air conditioner kind of not functioning when it should be in that building, and the humidity wasn't being pulled out as the terrazzo was going in. Terrazzo is a finicky beast, but it's a good product at the end, but it's it's got some work to do, but we're going to get it to where it's needs to be. Any other questions on Creekside?
Before you jump on, I'm going to just mention about Creekside. I've had the chance to go meet with the the PTO at Creekside, and one thing I echo to them is you mentioned we opened on time. We did open on time, but our parents, our staff, our everyone in that building provided us so much grace and so much understanding. And obviously, the logistics of opening that campus and having folks go down a temporary road to drop, that's not ideal. And and as a superintendent, as as our assistants and principals, we did not hear an overtly a number of complaints and and issues, and they were thankful for the facility, they were thankful for the people in the building. And so I just want to echo our appreciation for our community and our parents that say, hey, we appreciate the work that's been done and their grace towards that process.
Lake Creek, final punch list, the contingency there, it's still a healthy contingency. We have a few more items to take care of there. One of the big items that is the stairwell, that main new big stairwell, the treads on that weren't to the expectations that we had for them, so we had them replace those and put some full treads like in the other staircase. We added a set of stairs to the back that go out to the tennis courts because that was just going to be dirt. It was an ADA ramp. That's been completed. A lot of traffic was coming in and out of there with tennis kids and then people parking in that parking lot. We knew over time that the grass would never grow there and it'd be slick when it was wet, so we went ahead and just added the stairs there as an addition. The other punch list are coming through. We've got some appliances that are going to be delivered into the science labs. We're working through some of those other issues, but we're still healthy contingency there as well. Here's some of the pictures, some of the spaces there. Furniture is finally complete there. We had some shipping issues with that. You can blame Barrel on that and also some other manufacturer issues, but we got it all in. That's that long corridor looking at the backside of the stairs. And if the difference between that flooring, if you know, that's epoxy terrazzo, and there's no cure time or like seepage in the the mudbed and cementitious with that, so it cures. It's a it turned out to be a pretty sharp project, so it's just really expensive. It looked nice, though. CTE Ag, we're around forty percent on that. And as you can see in the pictures, I'll show you in a little bit, it's starting to take shape. As you drive up, you can see it from different places. There's lights. When you come up ten ninety-seven, it's there, and it's going to be a beautiful facility. Walls are going up right now. We're still healthy with our contingency. We have a graphics package that's still in there, and we have some turn lanes we're still working with the county on. We're going to have to add some turn lanes to get in there. It won't have the queue-up, stack-up traffic that a normal elementary or middle school would have, but we still were required to put some turn lanes in there. That was part of that contingency. So some of the pictures with that is, if you haven't been by there. One thing about about Stewart is they they keep a pretty clean job site through and through. When you walk that facility, it's it's clean. They put some of those walls up. I don't know, is the mock wall done yet? Has it been not done yet? So you'll be able to see it eventually, the mock wall of all these different, as they go through the phases of the project, you'll be able to see what it's going to look like on the exterior with some of the finishes, the windows and stuff like that. That'll be right there by the construction trailer.
Brad, I want to compliment Stewart and your subs right quick. I drive by the building every morning to take my son to school, usually about six-thirty or so, and I keep wondering when you and your subs are going to sleep in late, and y'all haven't. And, you know, that's just a testament. I know that y'all know that this is a serious project and it's a testament to the care and the the consideration y'all are putting into that project, so thank you.
I leave for College Station about six-thirty and take Lone Star Parkway, and they're out there when I'm on my way to work.
I mean, even on days when it's raining and I want to sleep in late and, you know, take it easy.
I just drove by today and it was like, oh, Mike, I like to watch it because I get to see the progress every day and to see it from last week to this week and the progress they've already made too.
I don't I don't know if you wanted me to bring this up, but they do invite board members to help pour concrete if y'all wanted to come out.
I get to put an initial in it?
I think I know how to make it a mess or fire.
Yeah, it wouldn't look good.
There's a lot of concrete on that job, for sure. So this is some other pictures of the backside here, some of the and then here's the pad for the agriculture center on there, the latest, and this is as of Thursday, I think, is when that picture was taken. So there's progress, and you'll see some walls going up there. When when do you think steel's going to go up?
Getting there tomorrow.
Getting there tomorrow, start going up about by next week. Another big crane, another big crane, not as big as crane, so. And here's the interior, and that's just a big, large, open space right there for the commons area and that staircase. It's going to look sharp. Any questions on CTE?
Where are we at with ordering equipment, furniture and all that stuff?
So we had a long discussion about that. We, right now, we're in the process, we're getting the final mock-ups for the classroom furniture. The academic furniture is a little bit smaller package than the actual CTE furniture because a CTE building, you guys all know this, it's very unique for each program. It's not like you go into a school, here's twenty-five desk, you know, rubber stamp or, you know, cookie cutter it all the way through. It's very unique to each program. So there was several owner owner provided, owner installed, there's some contractor provided contractor installs. We've taxed tasked Stewart to help us with some of the ordering of that stuff because they know when their 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 facility is ready. If it's bolted down, they can tell us, we're ready for that now. They know how the lead time is and along on that. So some of the equipment in the auto shop, you know, it requires a very specific plugs, electricity. They know when it's all ready, and if it's going to be bolted down, we ask them to help us and take take those off in the ordering piece of it. We met with Huckabee, Amy Vance, Stewart was in there, Jay was in there, and we went through line by line in each program and each room, what item was going to be our responsibility, what item was going to be what they were going to do, where are we with that? And now we're going to start looking at lead times on some of that as we get closer. When do we need to start ordering some of this stuff? Do you order too early, where do you put it? You know, if there's nowhere to put it or store it, that becomes a problem with some of this expensive equipment. And then if we do need to order it way ahead of time and it does show up early, we can work through where to store it in that time. But it's going to be a it's going to be a dance to make sure that we get it all coordinated. It's going to take a lot of coordination with with Stewart, with Jay and his team is great about this, Amy and myself, to make sure we get all that. We have the stuff picked out, and we just need to make sure that we get it here on time. So that's a good question.
Question is, are are students going to be able to drive from the high school campuses to this facility? Are they going to be have to be on a bus to this facility?
We're working through that right now. We hadn't finalized all that. Dr. Summers runs a collaborative team to talk through those processes. Obviously, we'll offer transportation, but I think the plan is right now is we're going to have, we're going to allow them to drive there if they're able to. Where it gets a little sticky is, can they take passengers? Can they not?
All those, we have to think through that pretty considerably. And Dr. Summers and his team have have been meeting just about every week and and talking about some aspects of the logistics of opening this facility, including master schedule, you know, what courses are we offering at what time? I think it would be very unrealistic to think in August of twenty twenty-five, we are going to be opening and running everything as we would like to be running it in August of twenty twenty-six. Right? There's going to need to be some phased-in approach to the course offerings, even just some of the new pathways that we have. We've got to get students through the principals' courses before we can even offer the advanced courses. So that's something that they're taking consideration, finding out exactly what will open in August of twenty-five, what courses. Obviously, on transportation, the more students that can drive, the less transportation challenge it is for us. So Dr. Summers' team, Amy Vance, it's and I'd be missing someone, I went through the entire committee of them, but they're doing a great job of having those conversations.
Yeah, there's Lake Creek representation, Montgomery High School recommend representation on that, and it's a team that's going to figure all that out. So that's a good question. Anything else on CTE? Montgomery High School, a little update on that is we're on time tracking and and tracking within the budget on that. Some of the big renovation projects that are going on right now, the gym, the middle gym, that it's a secondary gym that kind of is up against that wall. We're almost done with the floor in there. We're going to have it stained, cured, and ready to go for basketball season, probably early, early November, first week of November. We had some water damage to that. As we pulled up from the water damage, we found termites. And then we fixed the leaks and where the water was coming in through the roofwork and some other problem solving and a lot of poking and prodding on the floor there. And we we got the floor down, and now it's probably almost all the way down, isn't it? And it it looks pretty sharp, and they'll get it all ready to go for basketball season. The coaches over there have been very gracious, and so has the principal about, I know they have, they have two other gyms, the main gym and a small gym and the ninth grade center or east campus, but they did give up that gym so they can so we can get it done during that time. So other projects that are kind of on the priority right now and and fine arts, the auditorium over there, we started the process through Coventry, and and they they have given us a assessment of the auditorium over there. We had some concerns brought to our attention through some feedback from the fine arts team of some wiring, some soundboards, some lighting. The diva shelves are in there, and if you know what a diva shelf is, it's the big shell that goes in there that kind of pronounces the 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 audio out from a choir concert. You may not even know it's there sometimes, but getting that thing set up is pretty significant. There were some motors that were not functioning well there. We're going to, we had that assessment done. We're getting a quote right now to have all that repaired, bring it up to par and up to speed with everything. We started some of the work already. We had a consultant come out and work with them on how to run the soundboard and lighting board. There was a little bit of confusion on how to do that. It's a very nice system, but it's complex. They requested training. David Crowe set it up for them, got it in there and got some some support in there. And meeting with some of the other fine arts staff, the choir shelving, the choir room and shelving, part of the comparability piece that we're going to attack right now that's outside of the normal renovation package that was there, was the choir room. And the choir room didn't have any shelving compared to what Lake Creek had. And the library size at MHS was much smaller. We sat down with the with the staff there, the Montgomery High School Choir Director, Ms. Orr, and her assistant, and went through that, and they put together some drawings, and we're going to get some pricing on it and get that done pretty quickly to to get that project going. And then next summer will be a lot of some bathrooms, some lighting, and just continue the panels and technology component through that. So here's some of the pictures upgrades. There, there's the entrance. There, there's the entrance. So, if you, if you guys remember our secure front entry, this is the secure vestibule that comes in from that side entrance that they added, that we added in there. That was done. It looks really good. They do have the, um, per the requirements TEA, everything is secure in that area. Here's the P-lam that's purple, looks pretty sharp. And then one of the bathroom tiles and the bathroom upgrades that were there, it looks really nice. The bathrooms look pretty sharp as well when they were done. Transportation Fuel Center, a quick update on that. It's at zero because we've signed the contract. They had their twenty-one days to get a, uh, for their notice to start. September today, they've been procuring, getting quotes and bids to get that project started. They're going to begin demolition, um, the first part of November. So, you'll start seeing some stuff moving around over there about that time. Eric and his team over Transportation will be working closely with them to make sure that we do the dance of the buses to move them around, has work needs to be done. Lone Star Center, um, if you see a bus driver, and Eric, thank them because they're going to go through a little bit of a stressful time right now on people who aren't normally used to going to, um, to Lone Star are going to have to go down there so we can get this thing done and have a good product for them at the end. So, um, final completion is early August on that. Here's the, uh, triplets. If you refer to the triplets, it's also called Package E. This is, uh, and I don't know if the new board members of y'all know whether they're called the triplets. I didn't when I first got here. Everybody kept calling the triplets the triplets. It's three elementary campuses that are pretty much the same design. So, it's Stewart Creek, Madely Ranch, and Lone Star. Here's the Competitive Seal Proposal, um, which the board approved, that as the method of procurement for that. We should have bids in, um, on, uh, October twenty-fourth, and we'll bring it to the board meeting as the plan on November nineteenth for consideration and approval. The scope of the work for this, uh, for the, for the triplets is, uh, some smart panels throughout the building, um, front row as well, parking lot work, replace some raised fencing. If you've noticed, some of the fencing around some of these campuses is four foot. Some of it is not in the best of shape. We're going to raise that to six feet for kid, for student safety and keep those locked when school is in session for sure, where, where they have access to the playgrounds. Repaint interior and classrooms, roof assessment and repair, gym floor. Graphics package is in there. An entry, an exterior entry upgrade is another package that we're considering to put in there to kind of make it individualized and sharpen it up at the front. Chiller replacement has been ongoing. Stewart Creek has gotten to some new chillers. Madely Ranch has some new chillers that, uh, that's coming, and then Lone Star's is up and running now. If you've ever seen a chiller replacement, it's a pretty amazing feat and how they do all that. It's pretty impressive. And then update all bathrooms, including classroom bathrooms. It's an overview of what they are. There's going to be some library work done too, some other FFNE furniture fixtures that could be a part of that as well. Safety film, so you may have seen some of this going up. Lake Creek is about fifty percent done, um, and then they'll move to the auditorium is completely done. And MHS begins to complete all schools estimated by December two thousand twenty-four. So, they had one crew to start with. We've been pushing them. They had some staffing issues. They were supposed to start earlier, but we're on them now. Stewart with Huckabee has been hounding them as well to get started. They have one crew that started at Lake Creek. Now, they have two crews working. They should be rolling pretty quick. Once the high schools are done, the middle schools and elementary's move a lot quicker. Athletic Complex, we went over. And then here's some vehicle updates. What's here already are the fifteen-hundred, the two twenty-five-hundred with service body, they're here. Lift gate on the AC truck, we added that onto an AC truck, so the AC guys, I've never seen them so happy. They were having to use a lift gate that just was not functioning well or not at all, and they were having to get that stuff on, so they're appreciative of that. A lift trailer, uh, we had a lift trailer that was in really bad condition to move things like the, um, the lift. I mean, that's why it's a lift, the lift around. There's a new one of those coming to help out the maintenance guys. Box trucks, we're still waiting on. We're going to, I'll get an update on that pretty quickly. We do have another box truck here in the district that, um, we're kind of piecing together and using right now, and we also sometimes, not, not so much now, depend on rentals for that. The expectations, expeditions, which are the travel vehicles, um, that are specific to, to anybody in the district, where CTE, only CTE people can use those, or CTE business. Expeditions should be here in November. And the new bus order, we're evaluating the numbers, and we have money left over in that budget are to spend on buses, and we'll be, we'll be, we'll be purchasing some new buses and getting those outfitted pretty quickly because they're about a year out.
Just a side note, I did notice that we have some buses going out to auction shortly. And so, if you're in the market for a bus shell, go to the auction site. I forget what it is, Lemmons.com, I think is what it is. And, uh, we have buses going out shortly, coming to an auction site near you.
They make a great tiny home. Any questions about the bond? Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Information item eight, D, technology storage fees.
Yes, sir. So, last board meeting, we approved the purchase of four hundred and some odd panels, uh, smart panels for some, the triplet renovations for MHS. Um, and the reason we went ahead and purchased those, uh, at that time was cost savings, and we were able to get those at a significantly reduced rate per panel. The flip side of that was because we're purchasing them well, well, kind of like we just talked about with furniture, when you purchase them so far ahead of advance and you got a place to store them.